Twenty-one Anderson Township Zoning Commission. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lewis? Mr. Henson?
Here.
Mr. Ellis?
Here. And next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And does anybody have any changes to the agenda? If not, could somebody make a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion number?
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and second roll call.
Ms. Jonas? Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes. Next is approval of the minutes from our last meeting, August twenty-third. Three of us that are here were here, so we can approve that. But first, did anybody have any corrections or comments on the minutes? I didn't. Could I have them ask for a motion to approve, please? Mr. Lewis? There's a motion in the second roll call.
Ms. Jonas?
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes. Okay. So jump into the cases. And the first one is a public hearing for the land use plan, case one dash twenty-two-one LUP. This plan is for the Kellogg Gateway Study filed by the Anderson Township Board of Township Trustees. The study focuses on three key areas of downtown California, Entertainment District, and Exit Seventy-One South Entrance, their connections, beautification, and wayfinding ideas. Mr. Drury.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Again, the applicant is the Anderson Township Board of Trustees, and the request is recommendation or approval for the review of the Kellogg Gateway Study. Just a little bit of history on the planning documents for the Ohio Riverfront area. The first plan was adopted in two thousand and two and then was later updated in two thousand and thirteen. This plan was a land use plan, and it strictly focused on the township portion of the Ohio Riverfront, which we call our Entertainment District, from Sutton and Kellogg out through the entertainment area. The last plan in two thousand and thirteen carried this plan all the way out to the Claremont County border. It was everything south of two seventy-five to the Ohio River, so it included that entire area. And the update was right before Belterra Park came into town. So we anticipated changes in that area, and we wanted to ensure that we had a planning document that was up to date with Belterra Park renovating the horse track and then plans for Riverbend at the time, which included PNC Pavilion and some modifications down in that area. So this was strictly a land use plan. Most recently, the trustees wanted to improve the appearance in the gateway, the entrance into our entertainment area, which includes the interchange at two seventy-five in Kellogg, which falls within the city of Cincinnati limits, as well as the other interchange at two seventy-five and fifty-two. So we wanted to look at the gateway into that area. And the trustees also wanted to include the neighborhood of California, which is in the city of Cincinnati. So the trustees did approach the city leadership, and we'll get into that. But so the study limits for this particular project was Rensler Avenue in the city of Cincinnati in the California Neighborhood Business District through the Ohio Riverfront Entertainment Area. So the planning process, as was stated, the township trustees, township administration, met with the mayor of Cincinnati, Mayor Cranley, as well as at the time, City Councilwoman Amy Murray, to get their buy-in on our planning project. And the mayor and the city councilwoman at the time were supportive of this approach to include both California neighborhood into the study. So we had support from elected officials. We also approached the government agencies that would review such a plan, so the city of Cincinnati Economic Development Department, Cincinnati Planning Staff, the Cincinnati Engineer, as well as Ohio Department of Transportation, Hamilton County Engineers, and of course township staff. So we had a steering team made up of those government bodies, as well as we met with business owners on both sides, in the township and on the city of Cincinnati side, as well as residents who lived in the area. This was during the height of the pandemic, so the initial meetings were virtual. However, we did have a walk-through and met with business owners out in their parking lots. We went through the California Neighborhood District as well as the Riverfront. So we did have virtual meetings as well as in-person meetings. And then our last meeting was at Deadlow Brewery, which was an open house to review the draft. So on the plan summary, again, this is an aerial that shows the limits of the study area in the township as well as the California Neighborhood Business District. It is mentioned earlier, it did present key areas to focus, the interchange of fifty-two and two seventy-five, the interchange of two seventy-five and Kellogg, as well as the California Neighborhood District. The intent, again, was to improve the aesthetics and improve the gateway into the area. So this includes streetscape enhancements, landscaping, wayfinding, signage, public art, and just the connection between the two. The California Neighborhood District is a local business district and is much different than the regional draw from the township side of the study area. So the study focused on how to connect the two areas to make sure that they could piggyback off of each other and how they could benefit each other. So these are some of the items that were discussed. This was a site analysis graphic that was provided in the study. And again, it shows our focus areas, which are circled in blue. The gateway enhancements, which are identified with the red asterisk. And that could include, again, streetscaping, landscaping, public art, wayfinding, signage, et cetera. And then streetscaping enhancements along the corridor, especially in the township portion, there's a little bit more room to do more streetscape enhancements. And then again, the focal area connections between all three areas. A site analysis was done, which included the existing area, the existing signage in the area. As you can see, it's disjointed. There's much different signs for the Ohio River Trail, different signs for the entertainment uses that are down in the area, different highway signage. And so these are some of the ideas that came about a potential Welcome Plaza near Coney Island or in that vicinity. These are some of the other ideas, some areas for economic development. So it could be infill uses, although the study didn't focus on land use per se, but identified areas that were underdeveloped and have potential for economic development to enhance the entire area. Looked at areas for consistent wayfinding and, again, streetscaping to connect the two areas. Again, different areas that are highlighted or circled for economic development. Let me get the... So this area in particular was an idea just for a Welcome Plaza. So the idea was during peak concert events and peak traffic events, this could be used either for a Lyft or Uber pickup area. And then during non-peak, non-concert events, it could be used as an enhancement to the bike trail that's down in the area. And again, this is very conceptual. It could be either side of the street, it could be further down. But just an idea that these are underutilized properties that if they were somewhat improved, you know, it could enhance the entire area. There was a discussion about transportation in the plan. And any transportation improvements, of course, would need approval from ODOT or Hamilton County Engineers Office or the city engineer. But different ideas of how to move traffic during peak event times, but also to slow traffic in the California Business District. There were concerns from businesses and residents in the California area that there was a highway sign near Deadlow that identified the entrance ramp onto the expressway and that that encouraged drivers to speed up to go through the business district. And so when they saw that sign, they were experiencing speeders trying to get up onto the interstate. So items such as that, there was an access concern at Deadlow because of site visibility around the buildings are pretty close to the intersection there and pulling out of the street at weights. So how to improve that area? We did identify roundabouts, and there were pluses and minuses about the roundabouts. Some loved them, some thought that was a terrible idea. But again, all of that would need further study to accommodate, again, peak traffic during event traffic as well as just a normal routine. So there were ideas for roundabouts. And if roundabouts were installed, it would create opportunities for more areas for aesthetic improvements and streetscape. The other discussion, especially through California, was how to get the bike trail through the business district. There was discussion of including it on the main roadway through Kellogg or moving it off the main route through the neighborhood. So in the back of the plan, and we just did a summary on our presentation, but it did give implementation, actions, and priorities. The action items focus on aesthetics and public spaces, accessibility and safety, and economic development. And there are two pages of action items and priorities. And again, with this being a unique study, with half of it, or if not, three-fourths of the study area outside the township, it will take governmental coordination and cooperation. But we feel that there is a good momentum to implement the plan and different sources of funding to implement the plan. So we're very excited to move it forward and really create a nice area down there that can play off of each other. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, does anybody have any questions for staff? And I have just a quick procedural one before we go further. Paul, did you want us to, of course, give our comments and thoughts on that? And then are you looking for a motion from this board? And are you looking for opportunity for the public that's here to comment on it? How do you want to handle this?
Yes, so it is a public hearing, and we will take comments from the public. We are asking for a recommendation to the trustees. If there are, you know, grammatical errors, you can just point those out to me. But we're really looking for the substantive...
Gotcha, okay.
The substantive, you know...
Yep. Okay, so great.
And for planning documents, thank you for asking the question. With planning documents, it's a little different than a zone change. And I know some of you have heard planning documents before and others haven't. But a planning document is reviewed first by the zoning commission, who makes a recommendation to the township trustees, who will approve or deny the document. If the trustees approve the document, then it will be presented to Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission so that they would use it in making decisions when they are evaluating zone changes. The other aspect of this, in timing-wise, is that we will be updating, or we're in the process of updating our comprehensive plan, and we hope to have that before you in two to three months. So if this is approved, we will also incorporate that into our comprehensive plan.
Okay. All right, that's very helpful, thank you. So we'll start out, does anybody have a question for the staff, Mr. Lewis?
Paul, when we, some time ago, didn't we rezone north of Kellogg for hospitality slash hotel?
I don't believe there was a rezoning. It may have been discussed in a... Was it discussed when Belterra came through as...
Yeah, I sat on the two thousand and thirteen. I think we were, I thought it got to the point where we changed the zoning.
I don't think we changed the zoning, but it may, the land use category may have been changed in that planning document.
So what is it currently, then? Do we know?
Let me get that for you.
The second question I had, again, goes back to two thousand and thirteen. I think we had talked about a path sort of parallel to the Ohio River Trail, but going right along the river as an alternative for, you know, people walking to concerts, just leisure. Is that still part of this plan?
Yes, the focus of this was really a gateway into the area. And it did include some transportation elements. That was included in the last Riverfront Plan, and it is... That Riverfront Plan was also included in the two thousand and sixteen plan. So yes, that is an aspirational...
Okay.
...goal. It would take cooperation, you know, from the property owners through there. But yes, it is an aspirational goal to have some type of riverwalk through that area.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Those are my two questions.
Thanks. Any other questions for staff right now? Yes, go ahead.
Sure. Paul, is this plan being prepared? I know it's being prepared in anticipation of the comprehensive plan update, but is it also syncing up with any expectation of a funding opportunity or anything for implementation?
Well, the plan was really delayed. We started this at the beginning of the pandemic, and the pandemic really did take a toll on this one. Some of our planning documents were able to stay on schedule, and this one was not for multiple reasons. So the idea really was to... The idea came at a trustee's workshop that our businesses, especially in the Entertainment District and on the township side, could be enhanced with improvements at two seventy-five and Kellogg. When you get off of that interchange, there's no good wayfinding to get to a concert, to get to Coney Island. And again, this was even before I think Coney stopped having their rides. So that's really what the idea came from. There is different funding sources that we're looking at to implement the plan. One is the Ohio River Tiff. The other is... There are different funding sources for, you know, for art potentially. And we are doing an art study at the same time. We have an art plan, it's happening simultaneously. So to mesh the art plan with this plan. And then there are other funding sources for just streetscaping in the area. So the idea, again, was really before all of the pandemic happened. And timing-wise, we would have had this one done, then we did the art plan and then the comp plan. But it looks like they're all being, they all kind of fell in the same schedule.
Serendipity.
Yes.
The next question, I guess, there was, what was your sense through the planning process of buy-in slash partnership with Coney, Riverbend, Belterra in terms of these improvements all seem in the public sphere? Are they planning any private improvements as part of this too?
I don't know about the private improvements. There was buy-in from all the businesses. There was concern about the Welcome Plaza and its impacts on the function of concert traffic and other event traffic. So, and we did discuss that with both Riverbend and Coney. And again, it's a conceptual in nature, so it is aspirational. So if this were to go in, it would need to be refined. And most of it is on private property, so it would need buy-in from those.
The last question is kind of specific, but signage is mentioned a lot here.
Yes.
But also, you touched upon the fact that this covers California, Anderson Township, and other jurisdictional stuff here. So are we looking for something that is unique unto itself here? Are we looking to extend our Anderson Township, the block signage that we have throughout, you know, Long Beach, Ma?
Well, what we heard...
What's the plan there?
Yes, what we heard during the study was that each area wanted to retain their identity. So the California neighborhood wanted to keep the identity of a historic neighborhood business district. The signage in the Entertainment Area is still disjointed between Coney and Belterra and Riverbend. It's all still somewhat disjointed. So we would have to do probably a separate study on, in addition to what this is, to come up with a plan for specifics on the design. But it was clear that each area wanted to keep their own identity.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I did have one other question. They, with the improvements to two seventy-five, they did already do some restriping? Is that included in here? Was that, or did we analyze the existing strip?
We analyzed the existing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. My question, you mentioned this, so I think I might know the answer. But what is the city of Cincinnati doing with this? You indicated buy-in from the mayor and another elected official. Are they planning to do anything with this, or are they just kind of like, we like it, okay?
What the other entity I forgot to mention, and my apologies, was the community council for the California Neighborhood Community Council.
Yeah.
We have buy-in from the community council, and they are pushing the city, the elected officials, to either adopt the plan or at least come up with ideas to implement the plan. But we haven't received assurance from the city of Cincinnati that they would implement the plan.
Okay, I got it. And one last question, and apologize because this isn't a gateway question. Mr. Lewis mentioned something about it a little bit. Has there been any interest in a hotel in that area at all?
Well, the township did a hotel study, and we looked at two sites, one across from Belterra or in the vicinity of Belterra. And then the other site was at the Anderson Town Center. Both scored very well in our study. That's as far as...
Yeah.
And then the...
Makes some sense.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank, thank you. Any more questions? Okay, go ahead and ask for public comment at this time. We were talking about the Kellogg Gateway Study. Is there anybody who would like to come up and comment on the plan or ask a question? Yes, please come forward and just give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Brent McClellan, and I work at Coney. I, so sixty-two oh one Kellogg Avenue.
Okay, thanks, Brent.
I'm not a resident of Anderson Township, so I'm here from a commercial perspective. We are all for beautification of the street. We think that's a great idea, you know, beautify the street, the signage, et cetera. And like you said, we are not interested in losing any land. We do have a contract with Riverbend to provide X number of parking spots per concert. The Welcome Plaza would eat into that, as well as the other two circles across the street. We also own that property that you defined as underutilized. But again, it meets a contractual requirement. Are we all for beautifying it? Yes. But it does serve our contractual thing. Putting a Welcome Plaza where I see it there, it's the first time I've seen the drawings, so excuse me for that. That would... Well, we have the little easeway exit road that gets people out of the fast lane there on Kellogg and allows them to slow down into a safe speed and enter the park. We would lose that in that drawing.
If I could interrupt you for just a moment. Paul, do you want to put up that, Mr. McClellan's asking about the Welcome Plaza? I think we've got a better slide of that, don't we?
Well, it's very conceptual. It doesn't necessarily put it into perspective.
Better to stay on that one, then?
Right.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that, you know, we do have the little, that goes under our marquee, that's, you know, a safe way for traffic to exit off of Kellogg into our entrance. Again, I don't, that would be, I think, at risk. But it's more about our ability to, you know, make sure the traffic pattern for concerts is safe. We already know that we have issues backing up on two seventy-five into Kentucky and having accidents there. So we want to make sure that there's a safe traffic pattern. And we have our own obligation to provide parking spaces to Riverbend as part of our contract with them. And that would eat into our light show, but that's a different thing.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McClellan? I have one. What is your role at Coney?
I am the CFO of the parent company that owns Coney.
Okay, you're the CFO. Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hello, please give us your name and address.
Ed Bridgman. I'm the pastor of the California United Methodist Church at fifty-seven fifty-one Kellogg Avenue.
Thank you, please go ahead.
We have a couple of concerns. We have attended meetings regarding this, looked over, and we're at the open house. And we're at the corner of this plan at Rensler and Kellogg in the city. And we're aware of some of those issues and problems. But we are greatly, greatly impacted anytime there's a big event at one of the entertainment events up the road, to the extent that it's impossible for people often to get into the California, we call it the Village, the Historic District. And I don't know that, I think some of the signage points in this, some of the aesthetics would help that. You have a lot of people who are coming from the west who have no idea where they're going and slow down coming through this Kellogg area. So that's one huge concern for us. We were not able to hold one Christmas service this year because of the light show. It was so backed up, people couldn't turn into, couldn't get to California to turn into any of the streets along there. We like the light show, but it certainly blocked us. So that's our one concern. Our other concern is the, one of the current pastimes in that area is watching the bicyclist dodge the traffic on Kellogg Avenue, especially as it comes past Deadlow and there. It starts to curve, and people lose track of the bicyclists. We appreciate and would very much like to see that get off Kellogg. We would love to have it come through the village some way, but getting it off the road. There are signage there that says, "Walk your bike." Evidently, people who ride bicycles can't read. They don't pay any attention to it, and it gets bad. So those are our two major concerns for that. The traffic blockage is getting to be more and more irregular as more and more events are being scheduled at Riverbend, certainly at Coney Island.
Thank you. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Bridgman? Pastor Bridgman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Does anybody else like to speak? He's here for the other case, I think. Okay, we'll go ahead and close. Public comment, thank you for your comments. They're very insightful, for sure, when you are living with the area as well. So I'll turn it over to the zoning commissioners for discussion and comment. And then I think Mr. Drury would like us to take some action on this. Who would like to start? A lot of interesting things and a couple kind of important, very serious issues as well brought up.
I don't mind starting.
Mr. Henson will jump in there. Thank you.
Paul, you know, it's never fun to go through a planning process and then at the very end have a lot of input on the plan itself. But you did ask in the beginning... about some clerical grammatical issues, so if I could just point a couple out that I had, they're very minor. One is just the going back and forth between the township with a capital township versus lowercase a couple times. The second was trying to reduce some of the past tense usage in the plan because it is a current plan. And then just a very minor one on page 10, one of the figures drops the text in the document. You can make out better target areas of interest on page 10, but it is cut off, so it's just a very tiny thing. And the only substantive comment I had that maybe I want to bring up is, and maybe this flows into the comprehensive plan or other subsequent plans, but it called out looking at past plans with regard to the flooding issues. It doesn't offer any recommendations to that end. Are those planned for a different, this isn't really the scope, but when we're talking about property maintenance and appearance, you know, when it floods and they have to peel all the mud off and everything else, and, you know, I wouldn't want to repaint my parking lot either if it was going to flood next year. But it seems like that would be pretty much like an important component of a beautification plan. And that's more comment than anything else. It doesn't really require a follow-up.
Thanks, Mr. Henson. Who would like to go next? How about you, Mr. Lewis?
No, I think, you know, as a document, as a planning document, it's, it's well presented. You know, it gives you a framework, albeit non-binding. I have no issue, I, I do like Ben's comment about the flooding because it is a, just about annual, so maybe some mitigation strategies when you're doing the aesthetics that should concern you that things don't get washed away, you know, every May, so.
Good point. Mr. Jonas, go ahead.
And just on the document, I would just make sure all the table comments stuff is following the actual names of them, because sometimes those didn't follow it. But, I mean, I think it's a great document, too.
Got it. Thank you very much. I've got a few comments on it. I liked it, and I did appreciate Paul pointing out to us the, kind of the scope of it, which is not really land use. It's kind of a gateway and to get some awareness of the area, where you're at, and some cohesiveness to it. I did like to see that Mr. Arnold of ODOT was involved with this because we have so much traffic coming off the interstate there. And also, you know, is noted by Mr. McClellan that, yeah, the events get, get into the highway there, and it's an important issue, perhaps beyond the scope of what we're talking about here. I also liked a lot the idea of how you're going to make the areas come together. And when I drove down there, I, I honestly had not looked carefully enough, unlike the people who live and work down there, about, did that crossing even exist? And I saw there was a, a very good crossing under the interstate, and I liked some of the ideas the planners and you guys came up with to maybe make that inviting, so you could get some pedestrian cross access and people going to both places, perhaps. I did like the Welcome Plaza idea, but I, I understand Mr. McClellan's got a legitimate concern about that. Obviously, that is going to require the private property owner to, you know, be on board with that. So it's going to have to work for your business plan. I think it's kind of a really neat idea to give an identity point to that, but I do appreciate that Coney is staying active down there and being successful down there, and they have to be concerned with, you know, what's going to work for their businesses. I'm sure, you know, the planning staff and the consultants are as well. And I just wanted to comment on the challenges both the commenters had about the challenges down there when we have these big events. And it's, it, there is not an easy solution to, and this document tries to go to that, where you have these kind of underutilized spaces, you know, eighty percent of the time, and then twenty percent of the time it's overflowing, like the indicated underutilized spots across the, across Kellogg. But as we all know, when you've been down there, they use it for parking when we have the concerts and stuff, so maybe there's some clever solution there to preserve both. I don't know. But something that I think, what I heard bears looking at, not part of this plan because this is a gateway plan, but I heard it loud and clear, is what do we do and what can we do when we have these big events, but that perhaps disadvantage some of the other businesses there, like Mr. Bridgeman's church? They were not able to have a really important activity there. So, you know, it's, we don't have a solution as part of this plan. It's a little bit beyond the scope of this plan, but it's really positive that those issues get, get brought up. So I, I really was impressed with the plan, and I think that there will need to be some things that we'll need to continue to work with the businesses down there to make it successful for everybody, especially the people who live and work down there every day. So if that's it for the comments, I'd be looking for a motion, which would be in the form of a recommendation to the Board of Trustees on adoption of the plan.
I'll move. I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the Township Trustees of Case 1, 2021 LUP Kellogg Gateway Study Plan with minor text updates, and I don't think there actually were any substantive updates to the plan. So almost as is.
Thank you. I'll second. Thank you. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you for coming and providing your comments. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you for coming. The, the trustees will most likely hear this at their October 21st meeting, which would be at 5:30 here in this room as well.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Paul. So we will move on to the next and last case on the agenda, which was something we heard last, last month. Several of us were here. And when we approve that case, there's condition one. It's case 4-2014, major modification as approved in Resolution 2021 08232 for Kitchen 1883, 7640 Beauchamp. And so Paul, can you let us know what you'd like us to consider there?
Thank you. So after the zoning commission decision, the applicant further studied the impacts of that condition on the awning and has requested a modification of that condition. And they've submitted several exhibits to demonstrate the existing canopy, which is on the board here. The existing canopy is drawn in, in black. The original proposed canopy would be this red, and then in compliance with the condition would be this canopy in green. So the applicant submitted a letter, which is on your chair, stating that they feel that the way that the condition was approved would, first of all, not blend with the architecture of the building, the style of the building. A sign would have to be relocated, and it wouldn't match necessarily the awning. The applicant also provided information of the differences of the size of the Kitchen 1883 patio versus the size of the McAllister's patio. The McAllister's patio is much narrow, much more narrow than what the Kitchen 1883 can, or patio is. Therefore, the awning would have to, the slope of the awning would be much different and wouldn't match if, if it was constructed per the condition. So I can go through these images. So this was an image matching the condition, which they felt like the view from Wolfangle would hide the other building where the McAllister's deli is, versus what was originally proposed, which they felt would be more in keeping with the style of the building and the style. So they're asking for reconsideration of that condition.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Paul. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Drury real quick?
Well, and this is, and this is not a public hearing, but the applicant is here, and if I didn't explain that correctly, they can explain it a little better.
Okay.
But anyway, go ahead, Ben.
I just, I'm assuming when it says existing canopy, they do mean the McAllister's canopy, right?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to hear from the applicant?
I had a question for Steph. Do we have a standard slope of canopies, awnings?
No.
Okay.
I think the intent was trying to match the design of McAllister's. I think that was the intent when, when that condition was placed on there. But because of the different size of the patios, matching the slope doesn't necessarily
Right.
have the same effect.
Okay.
They are both, the new canopy here is proposed to be black with black post, so it would match the color and the material, just not necessarily the angle on the building.
Okay. Can you flip back and forth between those two, like profile? That's how it was required by us, right?
Correct.
And then the other one is how it would work for them.
Correct.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to say since you came?
Yeah, you know, here's my.
Please come up, yes, and give us your name and address again.
Matt Davy, 8235 East Dale. Yeah, we very much appreciated the feedback that we received. And during the initial planning, it was actually something that we considered. But due to the rise and run of the existing structure that they pointed out is much different in application when you put that on something that is substantially longer run. We believe that it really will take away from the aesthetic of the entire building. Just the Wolfangle view alone will now result in you seeing much more of just a fabric sail as opposed to the rest of the structure. And then if you also, we didn't have a great opportunity to do this. If you had a front view, as if you were looking from Beauchamp, you will be struck by the difference in elevation when you try to match that run to McAllister's. It will become the focal point, in our opinion, of the entire structure, which we really wanted to try to avoid. We want it to be a complimentary piece, something that kind of blended in with the rest of the structures around it. So that was one of the reasons we wanted to revisit this, because we felt so strongly that by doing so would really impact the buildings. And then another small consideration on our side is to match that slope and run, we were going to have to elevate the structure as well. And every bit of elevation that we add, you actually lose coverage underneath an awning. We lose runoff. We have a lot of other different considerations that when you gain those two extra feet, we'd lose some of the area surrounding the exterior of the awning just due to runoff. So multiple considerations made by us, and we were just hoping to maybe have a reconsideration of that condition.
Gotcha, thanks. Does anybody have a question?
Not for the applicant. Back to staff, though. When Matt McAllister's, when we approved all this, when we did the Kroger, remember this was the corner. I don't remember the awnings for McAllister even being addressed.
We, we went over that last time because there was a, a different design that was proposed before.
Okay.
Question?
So we haven't solved that, but.
It was a key discussion that I remember there was more of a discussion on the roof and the shingles.
Right, because of what you were seeing.
Yeah.
No, I think it's a, you drive by it a couple times a day, I think. It's a great addition to the town.
Were you referring to the three seasons thing? Is that what you were referring, the original building?
Yes. I remember we were talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were referring to the three seasons part.
No, no, no.
My bad.
This is about the original, we didn't know who the, who was going to be in it. We had square footage. We had sort of a possible entertainment for music, all kind of different variables. But I don't remember awnings being part of the discussion.
I don't know that it was.
Okay.
Did anybody have a question for the applicant?
Just a quick one.
Yes, sir.
The other, I guess, consideration in the geometry of this is a smaller patio, which could help you achieve the rise and run that we asked for. Was that ever considered?
It would be substantially reduced in size. And for us, it's really, you know, the seat equation of trying to offset this cost. It really wouldn't provide us the additional seating for the cost that we would really be striving for in a profitability model. And what our current footprint was, a previously established patio, so we tried to incorporate the existing space so that we didn't have to try to segment anything off or have existing structures that we needed to augment any further.
Sure. Thank you.
So what does this do to your capacity adding this?
This is roughly a third of our dining room. This literally is for us. I believe the gentleman had pointed out there was an original proposal up for a different structure, unfortunately, with budget constraints, and that was one of the first things that had to go. And to be quite honest, this gives us back, you know, the profitability model that we had built originally, these seats being so important. And right now, we have a large contingent of guests that are not comfortable dining indoors, and we're not sure when that will look different. So this is us trying to also have options for all of our guests regardless of their, their opinions.
So your correction you'd like us to make on that condition one is, I'm assuming you're okay with condition one except for the part about the slope?
Correct. Yes.
Yes. So the awning, material color, et cetera is all satisfactory?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming again.
Absolutely.
Okay, does anybody have any comments or an idea?
I mean, it's a little tricky of a wicked here with Jonathan not being present. I feel a little bit bad about that, especially considering, you know, it wasn't an issue that I necessarily shared.
Yeah.
And I do want to accommodate additional guests, especially during these times. And I know this is more of a permanent structure versus something temporary that could house the COVID wary. And then on the flip side, profit models and dollar figures aren't necessarily things that I want to consider when we're looking at applications like this. So I don't really count that in my consideration of this, but I don't see any strong substantive issues
Okay.
with accepting the request.
All right. Mr. Lewis, any comments?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, we're, we're looking to, you know, make the customer experience better. I know we did quite a bit, just in the Anderson way, with taking out parking spaces and moving temporary awnings and tables and stuff to accommodate people. So I think this is a, you know, again, not going to argue slope and, and what's appropriate. I think it's a, I think it fits in the, with the structure and with the neighborhood.
Thank you.
So I'm okay with it.
I would agree with everybody. I would be.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with it, too. And the other, only other comment I would have is I learned something additional here tonight, which is if we do bump that slope up, and I did appreciate Mr. Gothor trying to get the, you know, architecture just right on that. But I noticed on here, if you bump that awning up, it does kind of really block things, so that would be a concern of mine. So I'm in favor of making the modification. Any other comments or questions? Motion?
So are we just modifying the previous, last month's motion? So are we just modifying the previous, last month's motion?
Yes, we're really just looking at condition number one and removing and slope.
Okay.
Is there your motion?
I, I guess I'll do it. Uh, I would motion that we approve and remove, are we, uh, for case number 2021-0823-02, or I'm sorry, case four dash 2014, we remove condition one as, uh, as offered by staff. I know it sounded very clean, but that's all you got.
Okay, is there a second?
Are, are you approving that one and then just removing and slope? Or you're removing it all?
I understand we're removing condition one, which addressed the slope.
The, the applicant said he was okay with condition one except for the portion on the slope. So I think he was looking for a motion that we just remove the slope condition.
Okay.
So we're good with that as our second. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Second, so a motion and a second to remove the slope condition.
Are you good with that, Sarah?
On number, condition number one, we're just removing the terminology and slope.
Okay.
Yes.
But we're keeping condition?
Keeping condition number one, yes.
Yep, the remainder of it, yes.
And I just realized, too, we had some numerical errors here, so we'll correct that.
Ms. Jonas, second?
Yes.
Okay. Are you ready for roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Thanks for coming back. We really appreciate it. Yes, sir. We don't have any other business, Mr. Drury, unless you have something or?
No, we do not. Uh, we are anticipating a meeting on October the 25th. So, and I think our regular members have said it would be.
Okay.
I'm not sure. Right. So if you, we, um, we'll be sending out the agenda and asking for attendance.
Okay, great. All right. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, all.